Welcome everyone to this Long County Board of County Commissioners meeting of October six, two thousand and twenty at six p.m. At this time, we stand will have our invitation to play the
floor just come before you and I to take care of the business of the meeting. Of course, I'd ask there's been a couple of vaccines in September in our county and just please be below space and their families as they try to deal with the COVID. Also, I'd like to acknowledge this is for us actually where it's from and we just actually to be with all of those that are fighting through this terrible disease and also those that we've lost. It's definitely the deal we look forward with their families to put your arm around them and just let them know that we all care so much. Actually, just to look after our responders as they try to take care of these individuals, both of them injured, look after our members there, watch over our residents and all the leadership in this great country and county, please help us to move forward and deal with it and become one as we've always been, Christ on the praise.
At this time, our first job this evening is approval amendments from our September tenth meeting, September fifteenth, September forty-second, the special call meeting, also the five budget meeting, and also the meeting of September forty-nine, special call meeting. Do I have any questions, comments, do I have a motion to approve all of the votes?
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Clement.
Thank you.
Set by Commissioner Damboll, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving along to our consent agenda, we have items two, three, nineteen. Do I have any questions, comments, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Damboll, set.
Set.
Set by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving along to our consent agenda, we have items two, three, nineteen. Do I have any questions, comments, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Damboll, set.
Set.
Set by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Actually, I want to go ahead while we're doing the, we got one that's due on agenda item, we have a couple of minutes here. Uh, moving down to agenda item number twenty-four. Approval of amendment number one to agreement number Y two-two-nine point one, Florida Division of Public Management and Long County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an agreement that the state's asking us to acknowledge that we recognize the limits of funding that might become available to this county and it comes with all the counties. The number that they're used to doesn't mean that we're going to ever have access to that kind of funding. They're just saying all the funds that were sent to the federal government, this proportion chair that if we qualify for, we would obtain this, that's the cap on. So they want that to be agreed as a thing.
You previously approved Richard's agreement.
Yes, sir.
Do I have any questions from this parish, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. I got a motion by Commissioner Damboll, set by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you gentlemen.
At this time, I'm going to recess the board of county commissioners meeting and we will convene the meeting of utility board. At six oh five p.m. or sooner, our address matter can be heard and we hold a public hearing to discuss the possible board action, adoption resolution, establishing and approving reasonable charges for water and wastewater services of those building within the board utility service area and providing an effective date. Commissioners. Look, let me, uh, before we do this, at this time we've got that period open and I need to have our county attorney swear your name if anyone would like. If anyone would like to have a comment or any questions on this matter, if you please stand and raise your hand then county attorney swear your name at this time.
Okay. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you guide. Thank you. And whenever you're confused, come up to me at the thumb and make sure you give your names and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Damboll. I apologize for interrupting Mr. Damboll and Parrish, but we'll address.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in fact, the two gentlemen just stood as part of our consultant firm that works with us on utilities, uh, they've done a fine job working with us. The funding that we have received in the form of grants and this latest state revolving fund, uh, which they're forgiving in front of an interest on, so it's actually equivalent of a grant as well, is, uh, requiring, all of these sources are requiring that we had a, uh, conduct a rate study and we put reasonable rates together that take care of our appreciation of all core of the service and operation of the facilities out there, water and sewer. These rates apply to customers as we go forward. Typically, these public hearings are much easier when you don't have that. It's when you've had customers for twenty years and you're considering adjustment rates that you have authority to tell the people. Uh, but in any event, uh, I've evaluated the schedules they put together, spent great time, there was other locations and compared rates and, uh, looked at all of their performance criteria and appreciation schedules, some of the things else that came up with these rates that you have before you. So, a part of that requirement or to implement these is to hold a period to adopt a resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Mr. Harris, at this time, do I have any board members having any questions, comments about this, for Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Clement. How far, we got the rate, how far the volume of this, if this is what each would be just at the end, potentially, or would it grow in the product?
Of course, it has the ability, it has the ability to be extended later if we have funding to extend. Uh, typical scenario would be that for now at least, when the grant application would be, uh, turned in, we had a delineated area and it's pretty much the immediate incentive to have that interchange out there, that seventy-five to one thirty-six. So, that's the area that it's going to serve, that it will certainly have the ability to serve, uh, other areas in that incentive beyond the current limits. Uh, typical scenario would be that you get developer, becomes a commercial developer or something just beyond maybe half a mile away from where our lines are and it's cheaper for them to pay the cost of extending our lines to their location and would be then try to put in the water and see what's on there. But we'll have addition, additional capacity out there.
Commissioner Clement, do you have any other questions at this time? Seeing none, I will open the floor to public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to speak over this matter, please make a way to the podium. Seeing none, I close the public comment at this time. Do I have any other questions or concerns for the board or do I have a question to adopt this resolution?
Chairman, I do have a question just hoping to hear from, from our folks, but I guess we can ask that question to him too, or, or Mr. Harris. How does, you know, compared your rates, these rates here to other counties of similar size or similar situations or, or similar, um, water sewer systems? Are we pretty close to this as far as rates are concerned or is this?
One of you please go forward, we don't have a way. Just please state your name and address with record.
Delph Hurst, two-one-three-one-three, one hundred eighty street, five hundred fourth. When we took all the rates from the area, we kind of combined it and took like, we see where we're at and we actually based bottom off of city, like city rates, because they have a design where it stretches out and they're not behind the curve. A lot of the areas here are behind the curve, they're, they don't have enough funding to fix the facility. So that's, that's basically where we're at, or that's the kind of state that's everywhere around us. So we're hopefully, uh, this week's topic will be very important. Is that, is your question?
Yeah, I just, I, I noticed of the residential hookup charges, uh, I read it correctly. Uh, it was upfront water or wastewater, forty-eight hundred dollars upfront charges for residential, is that clear?
Fifty-four wastewater.
Forty-eight hundred dollars seems, seems really high and then the water is forty-nine fifty. So that's, that's kind of a question generated from that, saying that what we are seeing across the, around the state.
Yes, that is, it's, it is a little bit pricey here. Uh, a lot of this is going to be new home construction, so they'll be able to roll into the cost of the house, emergency, the same way. So unless you're having somebody to build an entire house, house pocket, yes, that's going to be a tough one to swallow, but no nice way to put it, setting up like this with initial one, that's going to keep you guys enough money for the city, county, I'm not going to ruin our, whoever's in charge of it and it's not going to put the under and they're trying to install it.
Oh, Commissioner Richardson, I would say, I would say it in and out of what a way I'm going to say that kind of company. Unless you don't have a name exactly, but I mean, the maintenance is on the town, it definitely, you don't have to work on it.
Never, that's good for you. Thank you.
Thanks for your question.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Chairman. If I can make a brief comment, um, as your hand down, if I have any questions, I just get a free book, maybe on where we're at with those facilities out there. Right now, we're waiting until we finish a couple of forms associated with state revolving fund portioning. Uh, and then they have to incur with the processes that we went through, the procedures, anything else, we've got a lot of paperwork that we've already sent them. There's a small amount more than we need to send them. Uh, and then I have a, an issue on an item on general business that we're talking about that's also a piece of it. So we're really in the twelve battle and just about ready to kick off everything out there, we just need to finalize the paperwork, all the plans that are completed, all the plans that approved, permitted, everything, everything that can be going on in the interstate. One of those moving power poles, uh, procuring electrical service, I mean, we've, we've got a lot of work in this, this stage and we're about to start to finalize some paperwork with this, uh, state revolving fund, which again is coming for us in the form of a grant. Uh, but it was necessary because what we wanted to do, the number standing would have been higher than what we anticipated, we needed more length and we were able to tank that money. Uh, so that's why we're here now and now we're starting the actual construction.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, do I have any comments, do I have a question to adopt this resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One question for Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris, would you confirm that the publication of the notes for this meeting, uh, this evening, uh, was published on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, all motion to approve the resolution. We have a motion by Commissioner Richardson, set by Commissioner Damboll, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. By the, at this time, we close the public hearing. And we will reconvene the board of county commissioners meeting. Next item of business this evening is item number twenty, discuss the possible board action rental facilities, Mr. Harris, glad. I would like to welcome you, sir.
It's always nice to be welcomed to a place like this, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Um, as you all are aware, we've been riding roller coasters for a while, COVID and buildings and things we do and can't do, as you're aware, the governor, uh, has got this in stage three now and, uh, and while we, uh, he's okay with opening up venues for galleries, uh, non-interpretation, uh, just interpretation, uh, target, but, uh, things like, uh, bit halls and concert venues and things are totally open. Uh, we've had, uh, guys that do some concerts, indoor and outdoor, we've been already doing some outdoor activities, tournaments, uh, rented, uh, vans, rental of buildings outside or small groups, uh, just like, like has guidance on what your thoughts are in the board, how quickly you want to move forward, uh, on having more availability of rental spaces. For as an example, uh, Tabby Avenue, which the Rose was here, uh, usually used to do gymnasium or next to that, for basketball and volleyball for his school, uh, used to do that daily, they had games also, but, um, I know that they were going to get back into this facility, but obviously the commission takes priority and this is accounting, but, uh, just move some guidance and we'll see what's requested the commission would like to go.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I had to comment to the board. Which we have, uh, a thousand.
I am, I'm ready for it, so. If not with a scale on the rental side of the, of the special amount, but as long as they social distancing is followed, we're supposed to follow that, I'm, I'm here to back and forth.
I'm, I'm good with it. The, the commission, yeah, come on.
I'm good with it, uh, I think that, uh, if you have tournaments or, or games in session here, we can, we can be like a lot of the venues around the state, around the country, we're doing this, just like coordinating seats and kind of presenting a social distancing expectation, we might want to have official staff in some of these things just to make sure, uh, social distancing standards are being met or at least are, uh, people are very aware of, uh, the need to do that. I'm totally, completely in your thoughts.
Um, I'd be glad if we do, you know, follow guidelines and, uh, the social distancing and I think, uh, you know, the three C's, caution, careful, um, sense, we need common sense, you know that too many people are, uh, entering into, you know, facilities and that, and I think some people did, did turn away, but I think, uh, I'd be happy to be like, uh, before.
Uh, Commissioner Harris, do you have a thought?
I'm, I'm on board. I just want to say everyone says we do, so you're responsible. I'm, I'm in support of it also, like, I kind of look at this, when kids are in high school, they're there for four years and that seems like a long time as an adult, you look back at it really fast, basically they're already taking a year away from them and I just hate to see that going to another year and those kids will never get that, you know, leg relations back and those activities. Uh, so I want to be safe about it, but I certainly want to give them an opportunity and just with common sense, CDC guidelines and whatever, you know, it would be thoughtful.
What, what I could just add, we have some of the events, I don't know all of the events, we asked what kind of procedures people went ahead and twice, uh, and everybody we talked to has had a reasonable plan. Uh, so I think it's important that we can do that, uh, not just be really, really, but, uh, have issues, controls there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, just myself speaking, but we have a certain guidelines against it, and those folks without it have more stringent things, so that's, that's, that's absolutely expected.
Question for the, for the attorney, did he have any kind of, uh, waiver anything in place for the renters or anything that, as far as indemnification, sorry, indemnification ring.
No, I mean, no, the answer is no, there are a lot of people that are utilizing forms what we issued at this point and have been directed to, you know, have such a indemnification effect.
Do you, do you feel confident with the special cat that the board?
I think so.
Like on guidelines, maybe, I feel like this board has just given, you know, you put something together that's going to be solid, so.
We have, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we have as part of the, of the original, uh, rental agreement, a general indemnification provision here for the, for the river, uh, people, valid now to the individual, you know, we can do that, but it could be common.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let me say first of all, these documents work a whole lot better than they did before.
It's more good.
Um, yeah, they work great. Uh, what I was going to ask was whether, uh, we're going to go ahead and establish a maximum capacity on a facility like this because it would be easy enough to, uh, undertake accounts that fit in here and comply with the CDC guidelines. I think that that could impact the numbers of, uh, groups out there that might want to utilize this facility and they know in fact they're taking it serious and we've established that in the past and it might be helpful to everyone if they were, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I mean, I watched the nothing last night and it was twenty-five percent capacity, but hey, there were people who stand, uh, wherever the locals, but.
There is a capacity, Mark's, or you can speak that, but I think it's a thousand over a thousand, that they would just stand, ushered us to stand in the four, the whole facility.
Well, I'm not talking about the general capacity, I'm talking about once you do the divisions and track down, when you start handing seats out.
Okay.
And the six-foot distancing, uh, regulation, you're going to find that it's going to be a much smaller number. That's what I was talking about.
Oh, let's see, I mean, taking a number out of there, twenty-five percent, sounds like if we provide plenty of space, which it is, well, point five percent, you're looking at that and that's two hundred fifty people, I mean, that's, that's a good size, and that's right in the end, but around here, I mean, unless it's a big board, I'm, I'm fine with that number.
Well, you may be surprised when you start at the six feet, that may not be the number, the number may be nothing.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think, I think if you, if you look at these seats and the spacing on those braces right there, you start doing math, that there can be a lot fewer people in here than what you, that's, that's.
You need the logistic, you got the spacing stands, put it off, you know, you got to have Joe doing O H at the end so Mary can sit down and, and can walk over, Mary to.
Well, if the board agrees that's what needs to be done, then we'll figure out what the math does and what that number of pool is just by, we'll do the actual measurements and take the time to do it right, so that we know at that point we've gone all the way.
I would support that and like the others tomorrow, we'll re-measure that. Here's the decision.
No, can I say?
Yes, Commissioner Clement.
This guy, I mean, how do you contact me so far, other than your?
Yes, sir.
We've, we've got, uh, a school group wants to do a dance or something like that, uh, Alphard was, was getting that up, uh, we've got our sound guys who want to do a concert, uh, and they can speak to that, uh, again, Mr. Rose is here if you'd like to speak to that too, but, uh.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hank Smith, one seven four five one, one eight nine three, white. Um, yeah, we're, we're ready to go back to work, you know, it'll work in a year, time to do something.
Do you have an idea of the amount of people that attend something, like bars?
I mean, you know, these are just dreamers, we want to pack this building, we'll be lucky if we get a couple hundred people, you know, I mean, we don't know, local bands, we're going to try to book out some local bands, we've got a couple bands already on the roster ready to go and, you know, we, we're dreamers, we want to, we want to sell out, but it's local bands, we're, we're lucky if we get the two hundred.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like they may have a better chance of selling out and reduce numbers.
Well, here's the thing though, if we look at the numbers of these seats, it's not, I've had to talk with the fire marshal here and the, uh, city fire marshal, it's the numbers of the seats, like when you have a basketball game in here, in this whole square, there's sixty-six people on this floor, including players, coaches and all that, the thousand is up there, but when you start moving people apart and utilizing the floor, there's no number of rows, you know, they were telling me about a music park inside a building had like a two-hundred-and-fifty capacity and while the fire people were there, they allowed it, you know, go, go, break it down, so we're trying to utilize the floor, there'd be no bands to play on that stage, see everybody in the, no one down here, so if one of those are, uh, you know, poppy kind of country band, they want to dance, you know, I mean, there's things, I mean, we're going to follow that sign to the best of our abilities, but again, you know, we, we can only do what we can do, it's, you know, guys setting up the sound system and, and, you know, the band player, we're going to have staff, you know, a couple people on staff to go around and make sure that we're going to allow, not allow, but offer like masks at the door, if you want to wear a mask, please take one, it'll be free, those little squeaky hand jelly stuff, we're going to offer what we can, but other than that, we're just trying to go back to work.
Mr. Harris, do you have any further comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott, you good, good enough about?
I think so, I think we, we, with the concert piece, we're going to have to work toward, uh, a better, a better plan than you said, you know, but I think we can work on it and, uh, hang in the bottom of the guys, you know, they, they'd hope all of those, they'd run out of other stations.
Chairman, just one thing, as we're talking about this, I mean, I hear what we're talking about spacing folks out, but how would you handle, say, a family avoidant, you know, I mean, that's something considered, you're not going to want to split, split those guys up, you know?
That, that really agree, that's what, that's what we're talking about, that's, that's probably the toughest thing, I mean, how do you level everybody, so.
So you, you're going to count it?
I think, I think the biggest thing is emphasizing things, uh, a lot of libraries for T V, I almost got in the brush of the day, but.
I'm ready to turn it over to you, if you can, makes a good decision, Thorson, if you have any more questions, we'll, we'll, we'll back there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. At this time, we leave out, uh.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to make, uh, any formal action, let's see, so we took action to restrict our, uh, damage to that before?
No, we have, no, what we have done before was just that, it is like the, the department that's still following along with that. Any other suggestions or comments?
Okay. It's time for moving along.
All wrong, that's everything else, let me back up. Lobby, building apartment, I guess, you go.
Thank you. Moving along, item twenty-one, discussion regarding third patient return to the appointment of the torts of the council board, an appointment of James Southern, torts of the council board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take this, this one from here.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Also, sentence council board, the T V C board, draws the direction, uh, open years, you know, when you have volunteer boards, you have folks that are appointed and folks, um, they either resign, uh, move off, uh, do other things, you try to keep up with the, the appointments and the appropriate dates, uh, of appointment and try to keep the calendar up, that, folks, since our T V C board has gotten a good lot of, uh, filter on the actual dates for when the terms of their offices will expire, so what I'm trying to do here, we have, back in two thousand and fourteen, is the last time we. Also, since council board, the TDC board draws direction. Uh, open years, you know, when you have volunteer boards and you have folks that are appointed and folks, um, they either resign, uh, move off, do other things. And you try to keep up with the, the appointments and the appropriate dates of appointment and try to keep the calendar of that. Folks, it seems our TDC board has gotten a little lot of, uh, filter on the actual dates for when the terms of their offices will expire. So what I'm trying to do here, we have, back in two thousand fourteen, it was the last time, one time in two thousand fifteen, taken action to address these different appointments. We got the people appointed, but I don't think we appointed them to the correct dates. So I'm trying to get that straightened back out so we can move on and be back on the calendar, uh, the correct dates. While we'll note that of the nine seats, there are two of them that are open. Uh, one of them is seat four, under the hotel, under our department, other accommodations, and the folks that actually collected the tax. And then, uh, seat number six under the same division, uh, for seat number four, this hotel she moved out of the area, uh, just crossed a line to Columbia. And then seat number six, Mr. Grillo retired. And with his retirement, he asked if he could give up his seat. Now, when we get to that particular part, we've spoken with, again, the coordinator, which would be the advocacy village. And we've, the board, the TDC board, has recommended that Mr. James Sutter, who also works out at the advocacy village, take Mr. Grillo's place, uh, on seat number six. So I'm going to try to do this all, all at one time. So what I would like to do is still leave open seat number six because we still haven't found it. But if you'll notice, the seat that Mr. Sutter is, um, getting, is it Sutter or Sutter?
Sutter.
Sutter, okay, okay. Okay, I want to add two Ts here. Uh, Mr. Sutter, uh, is appointed today, expires at the, the end of this year. And Mr. Greg Scott's seat also expires at the end of this year. You see it under the tourism, this seat number nine. It'll give us an opportunity between now and the end of the year to address that seat number four. So we can address four and then to redo them all at the same time. So that's, you'll hear about this one more time. But today is just to get, um, terms straightened back out, then Mr. Sutter appointed to fill, uh, seat number six. And I'd like to do a resolution rather than just proclamation so that we'll have such an eye contact when we go in there, you know, moving forward.
At this time, do I have any questions, comments, or that? Do I have a motion to approve this resolution as presented?
Question, over.
That motion by Commissioner Gamble?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All the papers say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries by law.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Prabhat. At this time, moving along to item number twenty two, discuss the possible board action interim finances associated with construction of County Route one thirty six, I seventy five utilities. County legislature, Mr. Randy Harrison.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is part of our state of all of, of that portion associated with facilities out there. They need for us to make a decision on whether or not we're going to need, um, need tighter outside interim financing, construction facilities. As you know, we typically use reserves or a general fund to cash flow expenses until we are reimbursed. Because all of our funds are reimbursed, all our grants are reimbursed, grants. We have to spend money, so a lot of paper work we have to produce. We have to take, uh, company accounts and check. And that takes sixty nine days sometimes to gather all that stuff up and we can send it in and request reimbursement. Then it takes some time as well. That's what I envision the process on construction facilities as well. Should deviate from that process that we've already experienced many times in the past. You see this all the time with road construction. Which the D O C funds and comes, we have to pay for everything upfront and reimburse. So a part of this, though, decision that these can make, I want to point out too, that we know that we've got over two million dollars in capital improvements and renovations. It's in your budget, spent there for years. Some of those funds will be used like they typically are, put back in there when reimbursed and scum. Probably most of you would remember, we also have a three and a half million dollar credit line that we've never used that's out there as well. So I specifically wanted to identify those sources to say that, uh, they would be adequate to cover any expenses that we're going to incur. So that in my mind, we don't want to seek any other outside sources of income on an interim basis to, uh, affect the construction costs until we're reimbursed. But it also gives you an opportunity to disagree and say that you think that we need to go out and try to cure something different. In any event, I think for the board to make a decision on just continuing the way we typically do these things, or doing something different so that we can communicate that back to those persons that are working on the application in the state.
Mr. Harris, I have, I have some input from the board. Mr. Chairman, how's your last election? I was, last minute. That's how I can answer.
I have to agree, we're going to act with most of the questions, we believe in both of us.
At this time, we just, uh, the board's decisions will be about this, Mr. Harris. Okay, we're good.
If we have to use the credit lines, break that back at some point, we might have to mend some of the documents associated with that. Again, we've never used it, we've had it, so we might be, I'll let you know at that time.
Thank you so much. At this time, do I have any more from the public who should speak on any matters? If you do, please make a way to my phone. Seeing none, we close the public comment. Move forward. Do I have a question to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Hale?
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All the papers say aye. Aye, aye. Motion carries.